I'd like to call a meeting to order. Everyone could please rise. We have a moment of silence. Keep our troops in our prayers that they come home safe. Thank you. Dennis, the pledge.
The pledge is that I am the United States of America and consider the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The notice of this meeting pursuant to the Open Public Meetings Act NJSA 10:4-10 has been complied with and shall be entered into the minutes of this meeting.
Roll call.
Freeholder Armwood.
Here.
Freeholder Bellante.
Here.
Freeholder Kenny.
Here.
Freeholder Polos.
Here.
Freeholder Tamaro.
Here.
Freeholder Valenti.
Here.
Freeholder Director Rios.
Here.
Recognitions.
Just recognizing the honorees of the South Amboy St. Patrick's Day Parade.
Do we have a motion to adopt?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Freeholder Valente, second by Freeholder Tamaro. Roll call.
Freeholder Armwood.
Yes.
Freeholder Bellante.
Yes.
Freeholder Kenny.
Yes.
Freeholder Polos.
Yes.
Freeholder Tamaro.
Yes.
Freeholder Valenti.
Yes.
Freeholder Director Rios.
Yes. Are they here by any chance?
No, Mickey Gross has taken.
Correspondence?
Each freeholder has been provided with a list of correspondence received by the clerk's office since our last meeting. This correspondence will be kept on file in the office of the clerk of the board for reference.
Is there a motion to accept the correspondence?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Freeholder Valente, second by Freeholder Tamaro. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Minutes for approval.
Motion to accept.
Second.
Motion by Freeholder Tamaro, seconded by Freeholder Valente. Roll call.
Freeholder Armwood.
Yes.
Freeholder Bellante.
Yes.
Freeholder Kenny.
Yes.
Freeholder Polos.
Yes.
Freeholder Tamaro.
Yes.
Freeholder Valenti.
Yes.
Freeholder Director Rios.
Yes. We have a public hearing and final adoption.
Notice of this public hearing was published in the Home News Tribune on January 28, 2016. This public hearing was authorized at a meeting of the Board of Chosen Freeholders held January 21, 2015.
The clerk will read ordinance number 425 by Ty Loney.
Refunding bond ordinance of the County of Middlesex, State of New Jersey. One, providing for the refunding of certain outstanding general obligation bonds of the county to achieve net present value debt service savings. And two, authorizing the issuance of not to exceed $30 million aggregate principal amount of general obligation refunding bonds of the county to effect such refunding and appropriating the proceeds therefore, and authorizing the public hearing to be held on Thursday, February 4, 2016, at 7:00 PM and publication thereof.
At this time, I declare the public hearing open. Anyone from the public that would like to comment on the ordinance number 425?
Where being none, motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
Motion to close by Freeholder Valente, seconded by Freeholder Tamaro. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. There are motion to adopt ordinance number 425 on final reading.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Freeholder Valente, seconded by Freeholder Tamaro. Roll call.
Freeholder Armwood.
Yes.
Freeholder Bellante.
Yes.
Freeholder Kenny.
Yes.
Freeholder Polos.
Yes.
Freeholder Tamaro.
Yes.
Freeholder Valenti.
Yes.
Freeholder Director Rios.
Yes. Reports of freeholders. Freeholder Ken Armwood. Thank you. Freeholder Deputy Director Carol Bellante.
Thank you, Director. As we are all aware, 2016 is a presidential election year. We have seen in the past presidential election years that increased numbers of people chose to update their voter records and register for the very first time. Currently, we have about 482,000 voters, which makes Middlesex the county, the third largest county out of the 21 counties in New Jersey. To help maintain our records, we recommend that if you have moved or changed names, that you check your registration information by going to the New Jersey State Elections website and click on the icon "I am registered" and follow the prompts to verify your information. If you cannot find your record or the information is not current, you will need to complete a new registration form and send it in to have your record updated. Remember, changing your address through the post office does not assure that the record is updated. Registration forms are also available online on the New Jersey State Elections website. Registration forms are also available online on the New Jersey State Elections website. You also can get forms from the Middlesex County Board of Elections located at 11 Kennedy Boulevard in East Brunswick or from your local municipal clerk's office. All forms are postage paid, so after completing and printing the form and signing it, you can fold it in three with the address on the outside and drop it in the mail. For any questions, contact the Board of Elections by calling (732) 745-3471 or by That's my report.
Thank you.
Let's hope everyone registers.
Freeholder Charlie Kenny.
Thank you, Director. Just going back to ordinance 425, just a couple notes on that. The market we found is favorable at this time, and we're meeting the state standard when it comes to that bond refinancing ordinance. We anticipate a savings of approximately $1.7 million in the debt over the lifetime of what's left on the $30 million. And it's part of our debt reduction plan that we've been carrying on here over the last year or two, and that should bring us to about $200 million that we've taken off of our total debt for the county. So I just want to commend the administration and the finance department for their work in keeping their eye out for when we have an opportunity to take advantage of such a setting to try and reduce the cost for our bonds and reduce our debt. So thank you to them, and also thank you to all our county workers, whatever department that you are in that participated or worked during the snowstorm for all the efforts and work that you put in. They did a great job. That's all I have.
Thank you. Freeholder H. James Polos.
Thank you. Freeholder Kenny, I echo those expressions of appreciation. I want to thank particularly on the emergency service side. I'm sure other freeholders will talk about some of the work that Public Works did here in the county, but emergency management, police departments, local fire, EMS, who were prepared, had many responses during the course of that storm, were on call. Again, many of our volunteers, as well as our paid folks, were staying in-house, in shop, being able to respond more quickly so they didn't have to come from home if they were volunteers, put a lot of hours in, there were a lot of calls, and I just wanted to express from a public safety standpoint our appreciation to all of them. Of course, everybody who plows the roads, our crews, the local crews and so forth did a yeoman's job. Thank you, Director.
Thank you, Freeholder Polos. Freeholder Charlie Tamaro.
Thank you, Director, and good evening, everyone, and I hope everyone had a safe and uneventful time throughout the blizzard of 2016. This storm provided record-breaking snow totals for Middlesex County, and I commend our hard workers from the Office of Parks and Public Works and Office of Parks and Recreation for their outstanding work, as they are the people who braved the worst of the storm by getting out there to make our roadways and our parking lots safe. I want to give a huge thank you to all our employees who worked during this storm, from everyone who salted and plowed our roads, to our park rangers who transported nurses to and from Roosevelt Care Center in Old Bridge to keep the facility going, and they didn't need a Humvee to do it with. And I'm also proud and encouraging to praise, it is echoed throughout the towns after the storm has moved through, thanks for a job well done. With the snow behind us now, I just want to remind everyone that winter is a great time to get out and enjoy our county parks. This year's Valentine's Day falls on Sunday, so why not plan a lovely evening skating at our Roosevelt Park family ice skating rink? Sunday has two sessions, one from 12:00 to 3:00 PM and again from 4:00 PM to 7:00 PM. What could be more romantic than you and your Valentine holding hands while gliding around the rink under a covered sky, you know, they're holding hands so they don't fall? Finally, I'm happy to announce that the teams can now start to register for the 2016 Freeholders Youth Basketball Tournament. This annual tournament is available for any youth team in Middlesex County. For age divisions, provide opportunities for ages 10 through 17. Deadline for registration is February 26, so please visit the county website or call our parks office at (732) 745-3900, and register a team now for this exciting event. Thank you, Director.
Thank you, Freeholder Tamaro. Freeholder Blanquita Valenti.
Thank you, Freeholder Director. From the Department of Community Services, last week, I had the pleasure of attending the Office of Aging and Disabled Services Annual Meeting for Middlesex County Senior Center Directors. The meeting was a wonderful opportunity to share information and recognize the tremendous contribution that senior centers make in our communities. With providing education, art, and wellness programs for our more independent seniors or linking seniors with available services and supports, senior centers play a critical role in helping individuals maintain independence and quality of life for as long as possible. I would especially like to recognize the Old Bridge Township Senior Center for becoming the first center in the county to be accredited by the National Council on Aging. Accreditation is a rigorous process requiring significant commitment by both the senior staff and the community. As one of only four centers in New Jersey to achieve the status, Old Bridge was recognized especially for its cooperative and innovative programming, warm and inviting facility, and dedicated staff. My sincere congratulations to the center and to Old Bridge Township on this achievement, and that's my report.
Thank you, Freeholder Valenti. I just have a few comments that I would like to make. Again, I want to also say thank you to all the employees in the county that were involved in the snowstorm, snow removal, emergency services, everyone really stepped up to the plate as usual, and it was a tough storm. Obviously, it was a historic storm, and everyone really did a fantastic job, and it's not easy doing that, working all those hours and being under those conditions, cold and tired. We all appreciate what all those employees did. I attended the Woodbridge Township Mayor's State of the Township address, and he gave a great report on the goals, ambitions of what's going to happen in Woodbridge this year. One of the biggest goals that they're looking at is creating more businesses in the town, cleaning up some of the blighted areas, and one of those that he mentioned was Route 1 in Woodbridge Avenue section where they've already made really big strides in cleaning up some of the vacant properties and redeveloped it and cleaned it up really nice, and they're going with an aggressive agenda this year as well. So I commend the mayor and the council there for doing a great job with that. Mr. Kelso, are there any resolutions to be added?
There are none.
Any resolutions to be amended?
There are none.
Any resolutions to be held?
There are none.
Any resolutions to be voided?
There are none.
This time, I'd like to open up the meeting to the public on any resolutions listed on the agenda. State your name and address, and you have five minutes.
Thank you, Freeholder Director. Good evening. My name is Charles Cradaville. I'm from New Brunswick. I want to begin by thanking the administration for getting this agenda on the county website in advance of the meeting so that people can have some advance notice to research it and look into it. I wanted, you know, I hope I can get this all done in my timeline, but I hope you'll consider giving me a little extra time if...
Five minutes you have, Mr. Cradaville. You know the rules.
Okay, but it is your discretion. I just hope you'll consider, because these are all important questions, and I'll be totally respectful here. I need to ask about the public hearing going to be held on Wednesday, March 23, 5:30 PM in this room at the county building. Can you explain what this amendments to the Middlesex County Future Wastewater Service Area map?
I could let Mr. George Viverides speak on it. It's from the planning board's proposal, but go ahead, Mr. Viverides.
.........................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Kathy Daniels Brummer.
And I'm Jacor McDonald from North Brunswick, Middlesex County.
We put in a request for proclamation for human trafficking, which was adopted, and I have documentation that shows that it was adopted, and we're supposed to be here today to accept the proclamation, and my sisters are all here to accept it, and we just found out that we're not on the agenda for today. We would like to accept the proclamation. I have the confirmation email that says that we should be here today.
Let me say this. This resolution or proclamation was adopted in December, and you were notified that it would be adopted in December for the adoption and for the presentation as well. Our office made numerous calls to you, and there were sometimes not returned phone calls, and sometimes there were. But at the end of the day, we can make the presentation after the meeting, but it's not on the agenda for this meeting. You want to make a presentation?
I have the email that says that it's today. I have the email that's confirming that it's today.
Danielle did write an email originally, and then Freeholder Director said that it could not be on the agenda because it was already...
Right, right. And it was an email sent out and a phone call sent out to you or your office, and there were some of them were not returned. Am I correct?
Yeah, I sent an email Monday saying that it could not be put on this agenda.
If you want to speak on it, you're more than welcome to speak on it, and after the meeting, if you want me to present it to you officially, we can get it from the office, and I'll present it to you officially.
I have it.
You have it there?
Yeah.
Did you want to say anything?
No, I'm just encouraging. All that I would like to encourage, because here, we're a Central Jersey Alumni Chapter of Delta Sigma Theta, and my sororors are here, and we're here for a reason of human trafficking that has been adopted, and we respect all of you who are doing that. As you know, this year, this week is a big week. Human trafficking is very prevalent because it's the Super Bowl, correct? So there happens to be an increase in human trafficking during this time when the Super Bowl is around. So I would like to encourage all the freeholders today to, I'm an advocate, as you can see the passion in my heart, regarding youth and male and female, that we need to spread the words to our mayors about being on board to advocate for human trafficking against the plight that we're currently facing. And I want to thank all the freeholders this evening of listening to us and giving us an opportunity to speak. Thank you.
I'll come up now.
I have a question. Sure. Why was it increased during Super Bowl? Well, they found out over several years that you had so many people coming in, and it's just entertainment, it's a form of entertainment, and it's unfortunate that people are suffering and no one's, you know, there are people who are identifying. It's just raising awareness, and I welcome some of the freeholders this evening, because we're having, we're planning a human trafficking forum at the First Baptist of Lincoln Garden on Somerset. We're raising awareness for our community in the Somerset and Middlesex County. So this is an event that we're prepping for, for the month of April, so that you can, you know, have an opportunity to get more information.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I just follow up there? When you say, is it in the host city where the Super Bowl is held, or is it throughout the country?
Well, I can't really speak, only the data, they're finding that it is in the whole city, because I just attended a summit in Wayne. I'm a part, we are, our organization is a part of the New Jersey Coalition Against Human Trafficking, and they just did a marvelous summit, and the reason why that we decided to participate, because we see the need. As you know, we just recently had an incident in Edison about months ago of Apollo, a salon, which happened to be a spa, that the police had came and raided and noticed that they found youth, kids, who were being trafficked. So this is an issue that we want to bring attention to all students, and it's very important that we raise it now, because they may be interacting with students.
Hey, Charlie, there was an article in the paper that said that a lot of the concentration of people that go to the Super Bowl, obviously, a lot of them have a lot of money, because it's very expensive to go, and you get a large concentration of a lot of people who have a lot of money to spend, that helps fuel the trafficking part of it.
Can I ask one more?
Sure.
You said they're communicating with the young kids.
Yes.
How are they doing that? Just so if anybody's watching this, the parents might realize, is it through Facebook?
Well, actually, there now, I've seen like different faith-based organizations are having summits. In fact, there's another one planned in South Jersey sometime in May. They had to reschedule, it was actually for March, but now they're planning for it. So they're getting the word out, and it's taking other organizations to partner with these faith-based organizations, as well as with the New Jersey Coalition, to partner with and spread the word. So this is why Central Jersey Alumni Chapter of Delta Sigma Theta is taking part to raise awareness to everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I would just like to say, on behalf of the Board of Chosen Freeholders, we have the resolution here for your organization, and thanking you for the work that you do involving preventing the human trafficking. I see that 50% of the victims are under the age of 18, which regardless of what age they are, but that's even an insult to injury as well. So on behalf of the Board of Chosen Freeholders, we say thank you.
And thank you.
[applause] State your name for the record, address, and you have five minutes.
Good evening once again, Charles Cradaville, New Brunswick. I see a few items were on the agenda about the jail. I want to ask about them first. The payment of wages to inmates, $88,000. About how many inmates is that, that earn the total of $88,000?
That's, I think it was exactly for the, for pension workers, that's not pension workers, so I'm giving it for the breakdown, but less for the year.
Do you know what percentage of inmates work in the work?
Roughly about 10, 10 to 15 percent.
10 percent, and about how many inmates in the course of a year?
Well, 10 percent of the population is about 90 to 100, and then how many return in the course of the year? I think that's...
Depends on your turnover, okay. I want to ask about the judge who's now assigned to the court sessions at the jail. Is that a new policy, or has that always been in?
That's...
Is it the same judge as before?
He's done that for a number of years.
Okay, thank you. And I do want to follow up on a concern about the Middlesex County Correction, Adult Correction Center that I raised before, that innocent people are being robbed, that people who are arrested and jailed, even if they are found innocent of their crimes, even if they're exonerated right there, the jail still takes $100 of whatever cash they had on them. And if you don't have $100 on you, they start a tab, and if you come back to jail, then they take $200 from you if you have $200. How is that American? How is that constitutional? How is that not stealing?
First of all, we don't steal. Mr. Cranston?
Charlie, you raised this issue several times. Intermittently over the past year or so, we've looked into it, we've asked you, or we've told you that you can get back to us and we can talk about it, if you haven't chose to do that. But the reality of it is, it's very consistent with all the other counties in the state and many jurisdictions in the country. It's an administrative fee, there are costs associated with in taking and processing those limits, and it's not even close to covering the cost of that process.
Okay. I could understand an administrative fee if this was a service people sign up for voluntarily, but this is not something that people do voluntarily. There should not be an administrative fee for going to jail if you're found innocent. That is un-American, to steal $100 from innocent people, and do the freeholders support this policy?
We do not steal, understand that.
I had $114 on me. I left with 14. Ward? Is that...
There is an appeal process in place.
There's an appeal process for everybody who comes into my system and gets arrested and gets charged that fee. Anything that happens in this, it can be directly appealed to me, including that fee, and certain circumstances, we reverse it.
Okay, so since I was exonerated, since the charges were dropped, will...
What do you do? Do you appeal?
Did you make the appeal? No, but I was unaware I could appeal this fee. I mean, I just, I left jail with $100 less than I had when I... I mean, I just, I left jail with $100 less than I had when I walked in, so...
I get appeals every day for a variety of reasons.
Okay. Well, thank you. I do think that this policy should be changed so that innocent people who, you know, are not convicted...
The appeal process would allow that to happen, Charlie.
Okay, well, I think by default that should happen. An innocent person should not appeal. If the charges are dismissed, they should get the money. They shouldn't lose $100. They've already lost some of their time. It's just not, simply not fair. Sure, but surely some are. You're looking at one. Thank you, sir. Thank you, Freeholders.
Anyone else in the public?
Remove the close the public portion?
Second.
Motion to close by Fielder Tamaro, seconded by Fielder Valente. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. There are motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second.
Motion by Fielder Valente, seconded by Fielder Tamaro. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. There are motion to adjourn?